All right, I will call the Department of Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ben Martinson?
Here.
Kerry Elgrant, I am here. John Daven?
Here.
Leo Thomas-Carr?
Here.
Kathy McGrath?
Here.
All coming for us.
Speak a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Item two, report from student representatives on student staff recognition.
We have four student council members here this week. So I will let them take over and introduce themselves and do all that good stuff.
I'm Caitlin Lipp and I'm a senior. I'm in student council, FBLA, I'm in, I'm in a lot of stuff. And I also work as a bank teller at the Nucusa Port Edward State Bank. And I plan on attending UW Oshkosh to major in education.
My name's Kyler Lipp and I'm a freshman in high school and I do most of the club she does.
My name's Ellie Schroda and I'm a sophomore. I play volleyball, I'm in student council, drama, and law enforcement club.
Hi, Megan Shields, I'm a junior. I'm in student council, drama, FBLA band and choir. I'm also a dancer at RSPA. And I plan on attending some four-year college for either musical theater performance or elementary education. So we're going to talk a little bit about what student council's been up to. So we started a kind of project called Subject of the Month. And groups of students sign up to come to the elementary school and help the teachers teach certain subjects to some of the students here, which has been super fun so far, so we're excited about it for the rest of the year. And we also have our all-star band and choir coming up on January 26th in Rochelle. So groups of selected students from different schools come and meet and learn a few pieces to perform for like the community.
I'm going to talk about teen leadership. And teen leadership is a group of sophomores who gets together once a month to talk about the community and the different organizations that impact the community. We have went to the ODC, the Bridges and Hospital. And our goal in the end is to plan to come up with something to help the community out.
And then before winter break, we had a movie day and all was reported well.
And I'm just going to update on the basketball records. The boys are six and four and the girls are five and four. And we both are taking on Pacelli this Friday. And last, we as student council are selling egg rolls and that fundraiser ends this Friday. So yeah, that's pretty much it.
You're busy girls.
I would ask the student council members to stay for about two more minutes for the next part of the agenda. We're going to ask them to do us a favor.
Okay.
So prom.
I think all you guys were on drama, obviously a great job with the show that was put on in November, is that what it was?
Yeah.
You guys did a great job, so keep it up.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your report. Next on the agenda is President's Report. Board member attendance, everyone is in attendance tonight. Next item is reading of TPI proclamation and recognition of adult school crossing guard recognition week. Whereas Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school. And whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts and heavy traffic. And whereas for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities across Wisconsin. And that service has helped to drive down the rates of young pedestrian deaths and injuries despite increases in traffic volume. And whereas adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members with whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct. And whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of the young people they assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. Therefore be it resolved that January 14th through the 18th, 2019, be declared adult school crossing guard recognition week in the state of Wisconsin.
We usually, we usually get them some, get certificates of some coffee or hot chocolate or, and bring them some too, so.
Great. All right, next item is draw lots for order of names on the spring election ballot.
So we have two names on the spring election ballot. Ben Martinson and Kathy McGrath. And so when we draw lots, this is how the names appear on the ballot. So who wants to volunteer to draw this? Tell us who's on the ballot first.
Kathy McGrath.
Ah, very good. And then?
Ben.
Very good, she has one of these steps. Thank you for your turn.
Two people running for two seats.
Yep.
Are the, deadline is?
That, that was my question, the deadline is over, right?
Oh, yes, yep, last week.
All right, next board meeting will be February 13th, 2019. So move on to administrative reports. Item A, report on class registration process for 2019-2020.
Uh, we just got started out with the high school registration process now. Actually, prior to Christmas, students received the first information for that registration process. And then this past Friday, we had high school meetings with all students eighth through 11th grade to basically go over what the class options were. Teachers spoke about their different areas and students were given a few minutes anyways to check in with teachers on classes that they might be interested in for next semester or for the next school year. The next steps to that process is truly going to be collecting all that data now back from the students. These students have to return all that information to us. What they signed up for, what their first and second and third choices were, all of those fun things. And we've got to get that data inputted into our system. And then we will start working on what those schedules might look like. We, you know, certainly will have a few more students next year in the high school than we do this year. So that's, you know, in terms of making sure that we've got all the classes where they need to be as well. In the meantime, making sure that we've got all the middle school classes where they need to be and how those classes are set up. Middle school registration process really only deals with band, the choir, Spanish. The high school process is quite a bit more complicated in terms of making sure that we've got students getting those classes that they have registered for and desire. But what that means is for you, probably starting in February and into March, we'll start giving you staffing updates in terms of how things are looking in that registration process. And what the classes that we actually then put on the schedule are going to start to look like for next year. We get together with a team, involves, Ms. Christie has been involved in that, Mrs. Darnell, Mrs. Neve. Mrs. Drew Wink has been involved, so quite a few people, so, and we start putting that on paper. That's where we're also, we'll probably also start to really figure out, you know, if, if we have to have overloads next year or if we don't, or, you know, depending on, depending on what you do tonight with open enrollment, there might be some implication there. There could be implication there anyways, even if you, you know, don't, don't change what's happened with the sixth going into seventh grade here. There still could be change in need there. So we'll start to put all those pieces together. We, you know, there's, it's really, really kind of interesting when you get into that scheduling piece. Moving one single offering to a different hour can have an effect across the entire schedule. So it's something that just takes, takes a bit of time to put together, so. That is really my report today. Any questions on our registration process?
All right, next item is special education open enrollment in 2019-2020.
I might actually have a longer report than I have tonight. I'm putting, I'm putting on my pupil services, special education director hat for this report. This is what we were looking at as Kyle mentioned, open enrollment. Special education caps are a separate item than just open enrollment overall. And I gave you three attachments, handouts that you had because I just wanted to compare 2018-19 to, that would be this school year, that was, that's what was passed in January, to what you would look at for next year. And if you notice the current numbers and then the projected numbers means how many students we specifically have in the top one SPL, that's speech and language, that early childhood, then first through fourth grade, fifth and sixth, seventh and eighth and ninth through 12. So if you look at those numbers and as they're gradually growing, you can see that last year, with the numbers that were much smaller than what we have this year, we only had one slot available in a couple spots and no slots available. So therefore, we're recommending that we have zero slots available except for early childhood. And part of that reason is we looked at our special education services growth over the past three years, that's this one. And so it, we put how many FTEs and how many special education students from 2016 till this school year. And you'll notice that our number of students grows more than our FTEs grow. And then I added speech and language in there. And the reason that, that number looks so big, we don't have 102 special education students. What it is is that some of those are, are double, they, they cross over. So some kids that received speech and language services also receive other services. So that's, it's very hard to quantify these because one student might need special education services three times a week for 20 minutes. Another one may need it three hours a day, every day. So TPI has a rating formula, you know, to figure out which is, it's a little bit complicated and confusing. But right now, just looking at numbers of kids, regardless of, of area of need, you can see that we're growing. And our, our FTEs were growing a little bit, but not as, not as quickly as our, as our numbers are growing. We're still meeting all our requirements for how many teachers we have to service kids. But we are getting referrals, I got one today, for instance. So we're getting many referrals of students that are coming in that need to be tested, not all of them qualify. But that is why during the open enrollment, as much as we'd love to take more kids, we just don't have the faculty to cover it at this point. So other than the EC, because we, because we do the 6603 with Nucusa, we can be a little more lenient there. So we had one last year, so I, we didn't go down by much, it's, I just wanted to explain why those were all zeros.
All right, any questions?
So on the open enrollment with what you're talking about, do we, if a student open enrolls in the Fort Edwards, do we run them through the test before?
No, what we do is we ask if they have an IEP. And if they have an IEP and if they're in special education, then we have to deny them. Which I know sounds far worse than it is, but that's because we only have so many slots. Just like there's other grades where we only have a couple slots open. So, you know, unfortunately, and let's just say our third grade is full, okay, which it's not, but let's just say our third grade is full. And someone wants to open enroll and they have a first grader and a third grader. We have to say, we have room for your first grader, but not your third grader. Just like in our special education classes, we may have room for your regular ed student, but that special education class is full. And it just goes on with the, the number of teachers. So it really doesn't have to do with special education as much as the numbers of FTEs versus the students served. So that's how that works. So we ask if they have special education, if they have already been tested in the other district. And then if they come to us and then we find out that they have needs, then that's on us to test them at that point and get them the services they need.
They're in the program.
Right.
Actually, there, there is some, some safeties there to, if we did have a student who came to us who is not in special education, but then we determined that there was, we do go back to the resident district and have some conversation about appropriateness then. And with the family and the parents, because it truly might be a case where we are, that, that puts us in, there is some provision in there where special education students, the enrollment could revert back. If that's, that would be the case later, you know.
Usually they've been referred, even if they haven't been tested, they've been referred. And we, we can see that on the records that they've been referred. So that's usually where we start to ask questions, so. Because we don't want that to happen, where we have, we have a kid all come here and then realize that, and then have to send them back. So if we do that too, that's part of this, is so we can avoid that.
Yeah, we don't want to be in that situation.
Right.
But, but that is kind of a safety on the system.
Yeah.
So I understand the workload for the specialized teachers is pretty full?
Yes, very full. We've had to increase our, our paraprofessionals as well because of the hours that are required for service. And so those paras work with our special education teachers and our regular ed teachers. But our, right, but our special education teachers are the one that are doing that direct instruction and that pull-out. And yeah, they're busy, they're busy, their caseloads are, are full.
So at what point do we decide we want to?
Well, we do have, at least within our special education staff at the moment, we do have some staff that are crossing over into regular education. So again, that's probably something we'll, we'll be looking at when we go through the scheduling as to where that need, need lies. And as well, you know, that's, that, that can result in the potential need down the road for more, more regular education staff hires, you know, or, or special education staff, either one. And that's, that's really going to be the next couple of months, so.
And that caseload number, like I said before, is a little tricky because it's not just a number. It depends on what the needs of that kid are. There might be, there might be one student that has multiple needs and one student that just needs a little bit of extra support. So sometimes those numbers look, look different, but there's different reasons behind.
As we have, as we had growing pains, as, as, as we had pain in reducing staff and in, in changing what we were offering as that enrollment went down, we have growing pains going back the other direction. And this is certainly one of, one of those things that we have to work through and make sure that we continue to address.
Is there the possibility that if designated need for increased special education services applies? I mean, this is sort of part and parcel that we have cross licensed staff. This is sort of part and parcel with the decision coming up later regarding the, the open enrollment cap for, for seventh grade.
You can't change that decision once you make it tonight.
I, I understand.
So if we increase staff, it doesn't mean we suddenly open spaces, so.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, there's, um, it's a, it's, it's really a crapshoot, really trying to guess ahead in terms of what you might end up needing. And if
Yes.
you don't guess right, there's consequences for it.
And, well, then I would say the simple fact that we're around 440 students today, which if we would've guessed three years ago, that was not going to be where we were today. And that's, that's where the growing pains and that's why, I, and I very much, and I think Ms. Christie has appreciated your willingness to be flexible with us as we have come to you at kind of odd times and said, we know we need another teacher. You know, we did a mid-year hire, which was special education and, and fifth grade at, at one point. Now, we've done late summer hires, so, and that's, that's really been flexibility has been the key, so.
Well, in most cases, once they're into the program, that carries all the way through, through high school.
Correct, once, once, well, you mean as far as open enrolling?
No, the needs, the needs for the program.
Oh, for special education?
Yes and no.
Yes and no, some, some kids actually, speech and language especially. Speech and language, most kids eventually age, that age out, you know, meet their goals and are fine. And you know, some, a lot of them don't stay all the way through high school, but others do, others do. And it just kind of depends, and we never know who's going to move into the district too. These numbers don't include families that may move into the district that may have, have children with needs that may need the service, so. But for the most part, a lot of those IEPs, they, they, they change, but they stay with that kid. They can stay with them actually up through college.
All right. Further questions? Move on to number five, questions and comments from people in attendance.
Nobody indicated, nobody indicated anything, so.
Move on to the consent agenda, number six. Consider approval of minutes, the past meeting, December 12th, 2018. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number seven, consider approval of financial reports. Any gifts this month? Oh. Yeah, mine is not on.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do January.
January 3rd.
Do the next one.
No gifts this month?
Yes, there is just one anonymous gift of $75 was delivered to us this week. And it was just, like you said, it was anonymous, no idea where it came from, and just assets to help students in need. So we'll be putting that in our families, other families at home.
All right. Take the motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carried. There is no unfinished business tonight, so move on to new business. Consider approval of Jennifer Pulver-Mocker registration effective January 29th, 2019.
I would ask your approval of that pending, pending receipt of liquidated damages. Jennifer is taking a position in the district that she lives. And it's a full-time position, our current position here, it's not full-time. Jennifer has done a fine job for us during the time she's been here, but I certainly understand her, her needs and desires with that position, so.
So move.
Second.
Just put a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number 10, consider approval of overload contract, Gene Stelchak.
Jennifer kind of was in our music department, somewhat of a jack of all trades. And so with that, one of the things as we had moved Mrs. Stelchak into the position as our district library media specialist. We had taken fifth grade band off of her course load. And will now need to return it to her course load. And at least for this next semester, would look to do that as an overload class. To get through this, this year at least, and then I, I don't know what the future would hold there or how we would look at that. But that would at least take care of one part of Mrs. Pulver-Mocker's teaching log.
Mrs. Stelchak is okay with that?
Take the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Moving on, number 11. Consider approval of open enrollment spaces for special education and regular education programs for 2019-2020 school year.
So the, the document that I had sent over with the board packet, the only, so I would recommend your approval of the open enrollment special, or the open enrollment special education and regular education spaces. My recommendation is that 32 students now potentially into the seventh grade next year. And with the potential resident move-ins causing that group to split, my recommendation would be you would open some level of open enrollment to that group as well. We closed that group last year and they still gained five students who are all resident enrollment. Again, the recommendation being in the special education side to cap at zero all those spaces with the exception of the early childhood and cap that at two, so.
Your recommendation is to go to two sections in seventh grade?
Not, no, my recommendation is open, open enrollment. I don't have a recommendation on the number of sections yet there, yeah.
And see where it goes.
Yep, there, and it could, but understand it could lead to two sections of seventh grade potentially. But we're already at the point where we may need to just simply look at two sections of
Exactly. Makes sense to open that.
Seventh grade, yeah.
I agree, I agree.
I mean, I think one of the perks of Fort Edwards has always been the classroom size. 16, 15, 17 kids or whatever, so I think we've, we want to keep that.
That would give you the flexibility to make that decision as we come into the second semester and you wouldn't be hamstrung.
Yeah, I will, you know, yeah, we'll be able to see moving forward. Open enrollment starts in February, last through April. I do know in that particular grade level, we did have a couple of denials, including at least potentially one where there are children now attending in other grades in the districts, so. And the, the actual number of spaces that you would designate for open enrollment, at least in the regular education, is the number in the parentheses. So that would be the spaces you would allow. And then the one down in special education is the zero, except for the early childhood at two, so.
And I definitely feel if we are, you know, we're hoping the district continues to grow, that this is the way to do. Instead of limiting it and saying, we are continuing our classes, yeah.
All right. Speak the motion to approve the open enrollment spaces for special ed and regular ed as, as laid out in his report. So move. Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Moving on, number 12. Consider approval of resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $600,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
So the first, um, first piece of this is actually, there's a small piece, let me just bring this to the light, I'm sure. So, and John, do we have a copy of this? Because we will have you read the resolution.
I got it, yeah, I can get it.
We'll have you read the first resolution for sure, the second one, we may paraphrase that out since it's multiple pages.
Sounding like my computer works, yours doesn't.
You got a copy for him?
Resolution. Be it resolved by the school board of the school district of Fort Edwards, Wood County, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by $600,000 per year for five years, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year and ending with the 2023-2024 school year for non-recurring purposes consisting of maintaining educational programs and paying for operational and maintenance expenses. So you need a motion? Then a second.
So moved.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Exactly what we discussed at the special section last week. I think we're all pretty much aware of how it, how it plays out and what the I think we're all pretty much aware of how it, how it plays out and what the pros and cons of it are, so.
Make the motion on the second, any other discussion? Are there none, all those in favor of the-
We would ask that you take a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call for this specific vote. Ben Martenson. Carrie Hildebrandt, I am here. John Dabin.
How did you vote?
Oh, we got a-
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote. Okay, Ben Mar- Martenson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Hildebrandt, I vote yes. John Dabin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leo Thomasgard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy McGrath, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Five, zero vote.
Need your accountability now.
Resolution is approved. Moving on to number 13, consider approval of resolution providing for referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $600,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
So in that first resolution, you simply, you basically, as the board said, you would agree that the revenue limit should exceed by $600,000. Now, this resolution is actually calling for that amount to be placed upon a ballot for the electors. This one is quite a lengthy resolution. I believe we need to read all of this one, but I will pass it over for you just so you can prove it, and we can talk about what's in this one, because this one is rather lengthy. And just so that you are clear as to what is in it, this one again talks about the question that you posed, which is asking the voters for $600,000 per year for five years. And it asks that the district clerk, which is actually Carrie, but we will take care of that through our business means, place that before, place that upon the ballot. We will work with our local municipalities to get that placed upon the ballot. And it also calls for us to do publications, so we will do our publications through the Wisconsin Rapids Daily Tribune and our other notices throughout the district as we do. We'll also have to place a sample ballot in, and again, want to work with municipalities and whatnot to get that done. You're calling for it to be at the regular polling places and regular hours, and we're going to ask the municipalities to assist us with that. A lot of asking the municipalities to do a lot of work with us on this. And again, working with the municipalities on how the vote will be conducted. It's really not as complicated as it lays out in here. We'll also have to canvass that vote when we are done. The district does take care of its own canvassing of the vote, and that's where we basically verify the election returns. So the Board of Canvassers will meet after the election and conduct that canvass, so. And as well, we have to give notice to the Department of Public Instruction, so that we're doing all of this, especially if this referendum were to pass. That allows the Department of Public Instruction to change our revenue limit, worksheets and other documents that they work with us on, so.
All right.
So this is more the technical side of what you have just done in the first resolution.
Any other discussion? Make the motion to approve this resolution. So moved.
Second.
You ask that you vote all vote?
This one, all vote. Ben Martenson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Hildebrandt, I vote yes. John Dabin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leo Thomasgard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kathy McGrath, how do you vote?
Yes.
Five, zero vote.
We do have quite a few documents that will need to be signed this evening. So before John and Carrie Lee.
Don't run away, is what you're trying to say.
They have to stay after school. Yes.
I don't think they ever run away.
The other, the other document that I included, and I believe Lisa, did you link copies for everybody, or just one copy?
The letter.
The letter from-
I already gave you the, yeah.
Okay, so we did include in your board packet, but also from Quarles and Brady, a letter on election practices that we need to follow, and we need to follow as a district, so. And I'll be talking with Quarles and Brady tomorrow, and I will have them, I'm going to have them rehash that section with me, so that I can make sure that you have any questions you might have answered on advocacy, information and whatnot in your hands, and I'll report back to you, so.
All right. Next item is opportunity for individual board member comment. Start with Kathy.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Pulvermacher for her service to the district and wish her well in her new position, and thanks to Mrs. Stelchak for taking an overload and helping us out the other year. And I'd also like to thank Art for videotaping our board meetings for the past, I don't know how many years he did it.
About three.
Yeah, about three years.
I think the actions that we've undertaken tonight, which are new to this district, at least in my tenure here, bode well. I think it speaks to the confidence that we have in what we do and how we do it. I think it speaks to the confidence we have that the community, the parents, the tact affairs, the community members who will be asked to vote on this, I believe we have confidence that they support and want good schools in Port Edwards, and we want to provide an opportunity for the children of the district to have every conceivable advantage that we can afford to give them. I'm hopeful and cautiously optimistic.
Good to see the kids out here again, talking about what's going on a little bit at the school, maybe didn't have quite as much activities going on right after the new year. But again, really nice to see those kids coming out here, having to speak in front of the board and, and the people in attendance. Good for them.
Just want to thank Kyle, Lisa, they did a lot of work in the last six, seven meetings, putting things together, so we had good information and so we knew exactly what we were talking about and could have good discussions on numbers and situations, so thanks to you guys. And just like Leo said, I mean, we're here trying to get good education in Port Edwards and good staffing and keep the good things that we've had going here for many years and can keep it going, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I was just going to go with Leo and Ben, just said, we've experienced excellent growth in the past few years and, and we've got a lot of good things going, and I want to see it continue, and I think what we've done tonight will be the best for our school districts, and optimistic as well. With that, establish future board meetings February 13. Do you want to do March? Who's got it? March. March.
Be the same date, one. March circuit.
Second.
One, yeah, second Wednesday. The board may want to consider in March, and we can certainly talk about this at the February meeting, the board may want to consider in March an informational session on the referendum, and we can talk more about that in February. Maybe it's going to be on late February, maybe two informations, but probably for sure one. So just to keep that in mind, and again, we don't have to decide that date tonight, but we probably will want to talk about it for sure in February, so that if we get it published in our newsletter or in any other publications, if there's information that the board would want to.
Since it's a new experience, we need to make sure we know how to proceed correctly and
Yep.
how to properly publicize and inform the people who are going to be asked to vote on this.
Yes.
All right. Call for a German.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion on the second, all those in favor of a German, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, for a German.